Good evening, Winthrop. And welcome to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of July 6th, 2021. Meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room with all councilors but one present. We also have guests and public in the Harvey Room. And we have public on Zoom. So the number to call in for Zoom is 1-301-5715-8592. Again, that's 1-301-715-8592. The ID number to get on is 82094396451. Okay? We were opened in a public and went into an executive session earlier. We voted to come out of the executive session, so I am not going to call the meeting to order again. But I am going to ask, well, Stephen, Councilor General, to give us the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence? So we had a very unfortunate incident that occurred just this past week where two of Winthrop's citizens were murdered in a hate crime. And they both have now been buried. And I would like to hold a moment of silence for Ramona Cooper and David Green. That was a senseless act that took their lives. Okay, thank you. I'll let ten of motions accept the minutes.
Motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any amendments?
It says approval of the minutes of July 6th. So just to make sure, that's tonight.
It's tonight.
Oh. It should be for June 22nd.
These are the minutes of the last meeting. Would you correct the date, please?
June 22nd.
June 23rd.
June 23rd.
22nd.
22nd.
Second. Okay.
Kind of getting ahead of ourselves here, huh?
All right. Any other amendments? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote and so ordered. Okay, general information and recommendations. I see that we have Revising and Revere Street project. Steve, are you taking that?
National Grid.
Dan, and his team are going to put on a presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions before or after.
Okay. All right, well, that was under general information. But we are now having public hearings. And I'm going to open up for public hearings. And the public hearing, first one, so this is National Grid who is approaching us. We'll open up a hearing on National Grid Plan 26074955, National Grid Plan 30386215, and National Grid Plan 30399374.
WCT is here and Zoom is here. So if he's talking about it, we can help you and assist you showing those designs to both camps. Hope that...
Okay, will you please identify yourselves?
Good evening. My name is Dan Cameron. And I'm a community assistant manager of National Grid.
Okay.
My name is JT Fortier. I'm the lead project manager of National Grid Electric.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. Thank you very much for taking the time to meet with us this evening. But we're here to discuss an electric project within the town of Winthrop and also for the city of Beavie. So as I said, my name is Dan Cameron. I've been covering this town for quite some time. And over the years, I've been very familiar with the history of electrical issues in this town. And so what I want to do is just sort of give you a little bit of background. Give you a little bit of an overview ahead, an overview rather of the project. And then I'm going to turn it over to JT. And we also have John Castro here for National Grid. He's our engineer for the project. But for those of you who have been around in the town for quite some time, if you go back maybe 10 or 20 years, we've had some significant challenges with the electric reliability in the town of Winthrop. And we've done quite a bit of work over the years. Two major things that we did was we constructed a brand-new feeder because in the past, half the town was fed from this overhead feeder. When that went out, we really didn't have a backup. So we hit, that was the first thing we did, was extended a brand-new feeder so we'd have a one complete loop system within the town. The second thing we did was, in our main substation in town, which is down on Argyle Street, adjacent to Dunkin' Donuts, we did a significant amount of infrastructure improvement there probably four, five, six years ago. I know we had cooperation from the town as well because we had to get easier and so forth. So those are two significant projects that were done. Obviously, costing millions of dollars. I think everyone can agree that the reliability today is much better than it was years ago. Sort of the third layer to that is, okay, where does the power come from? And the power comes in from the city of Beavie. All right. And if I can give a, if you take a look at this, you can see right over here is the ending point, which is Argyle Street Substation adjacent to Dunkin' Donuts. So the red root here is the existing 23,000-volt cables. They're all underground that start from our, what we call our Revere Number 7 Substation, which is over here on the Revere Beach Parkway near the intersection of Route 1A. It's about two and a half miles away. And at this point is where that station ties into the very high voltage grid at 150,000 volt. So out of that, these lines come all the way down and feed into Winthrop. And then there's a second set of lines that feeds down to Medcap Substation right next door here, the Town Hall. So that's how the power gets into the town. There is the added challenge with the fact that we obviously have water on one side. But also, this is the end of the line for National Grid because once you get into East Boston, that's served by every source, another utility. All right? So what we want to do, and we've done this, you know, this part of our capital planning on areas that we serve throughout the state, is that we want to replace these cables. But a lot of them are direct buried. So in other words, years ago, they dug a trench, put the cable in the ground, and then backfilled. And then whenever there's a problem, we could sort of pinpoint where the cable is. We dig it up, we repair it. Today's technology is to put it in a manhole and duct system. Okay? It's a quicker way to repair it. And so this is, you know, like I said, it's a major project where we're going to build a new manhole and duct system, basically mostly in the same roof. And about 20% of it is in the town of Winthrop, basically on Revere Street. So it comes in along, you know, right along the water here. And it'll go along Revere Street and then tie into the substation over on Argyle Street. I'm going to turn it over to JT in a minute because it is a multi-phase project where we have to build a manhole and duct system. We have to then pull all the cable, all the way from Revere Substation all the way down here. We have to then energize that cable. Then we can disconnect the old cables. And then there's a portion of the old cables we actually have to take out of the ground. All right? So as part of, you know, any major asset replacement project that we do, we do have to get a rental location from the community. So that's why we're here tonight. All right? We have had several meetings over the last six or eight months, almost a year now, with Mr. Delhunke and Mr. Calla, going over, and Mr. Flanagan, the fire chief, going over a lot of different details, traffic and schedules and all that kind of stuff. So I think we're, and we've also, which JT's going to get into in a minute, we have a memorandum of agreement as to how this area will be restored, you know, when we're done. So that's sort of the overview as to why we're here.
Is it going to all stay underground?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we're now going up with more poles.
It's all underground. So with that, I don't know if we want to open up the questions now or just invite Mr. Fortier to vote. To put a little more detail on the...
Let's hear him, and then we'll open up for all the questions.
Okay.
All right, so for sake of this presentation, this map's actually, it should be in the packet. It's the map that we're going to be doing on the grand will be. So in efforts to try to minimize impact to the community, National Grid has taken a multi-phase look at this project, being done this fiscal year. We were prepared to do it the following year, and then final restoration being in 2023. Dan started to highlight, you know, it's a long duration project. But part of the color coding on this map is to illustrate that we won't be in Winthrop the entirety of the time. So we'll be working small sections of the area. For instance, if you look at the green lines, it's tough to see the green. But if you look at the intersection of Upland Road and Revere Street, there's a small segment of work to be completed there. That's our Manhole 145. That piece of the construction sequence will happen this year, in 2021. Part of that was determined through a meeting with Terry and Steve, looking at traffic management, being able to utilize Upland Road to divert traffic, minimizing in fact the inflow, outflow on the road. The other thing I did want to highlight from a construction sequencing standpoint, the vendor in which we've selected has decided to create a gang-like construction. They'll come in, they'll excavate, they'll install conduits, they'll cap the conduits where they can completely run, and then they'll restore each day. So you'll see paving each day. At the end of each day, all the equipment, I'm sure you're familiar with some other construction sites you've seen, backhoes and manholes and pipes stacked along the side of the road. The intent for this phase of the project is they've secured space at the Wonderland property with the MBTA. They're going to remove equipment daily and then bring equipment back. The intent is, outside of working hours, the impact should be minimal. If you look at the map and then you look at the purple phase, that's year two. Some of that's driven by work that's required for us on the Revere end of the project. So it's segmented becoming and will go. If you look at the second section over at Crest Ave, Highland and Revere Street, that intersection, we talked with Terry and Steve. That's year one work for us to get out of the way of Winthrop's traffic improvement plan. So that when your project comes in, we're completely, you guys can do your work throughout the way. There wouldn't be a conflict in that space. And then year three is the yellow, the yellow section is our removals. That's, as Dan started to say, is the removal of the dark barbed cables.
So the purple's going to be the new line coming to Winthrop. And once that's hooked up, you're going to take this yellow line right out.
That's correct. So just for clarity, it's the purple and the green line.
What's the number of weeks for each of these greens?
I have it broken down into seasons. So if you look at Manhole 145, which is located at Upland and Revere Street, we have it listed this summer. Initially, when we listed that, that was based on our initial attempt back in May to get in front of you guys. So that may be late summer, early fall at this point. And then 148, which is your intersection of Highland, Crest and Revere Street down to Argyle, we have that scheduled for the fall time.
For when?
Fall of 2021.
So we're looking at a period of months that this is going to be going on?
The work, this year's work I'd limit to probably two and a half months, late summer, fall.
And this, of course, is Council Flockhart's precinct, so she's concerned with traffic.
I'm assuming a committee's going to get it too.
That's a high overview. I'm not sure if you guys want to open for questions.
Just on the traffic, I would just like to say that the traffic so outbound will go and divert up Highland and then down Upland and out Revere. Inbound traffic will still flow on Revere Street. There'll be some points during the construction where they might have to have a total closure. But that's not going to happen on a daily basis. So I just wanted to make sure that we've gone over the traffic plan pretty extensively. We've tweaked their initial plan between me, Steve, and the fire chief. So I just want to let everyone know ahead of time what, who's going what way. I told Dan it was very important that we return parking to people off Revere Street for overnight parking, and then they get their cars out by the next morning at 7:00 a.m. But that was a very important thing for us.
They're going to go outbound to Revere along Upland Road?
So they would go up Highland, they'd take a left on Cliff, and they come to Quincy. Quincy to Upland, down Upland, and out Revere.
We're going to repave up Quincy, not Quincy, yeah, Quincy. Quincy, Cliff. You're going to repave Cliff before all this?
That's going to be part of a repaving project associated with our line replacements. So that will get repaved this year. It's not part of National Grid's...
Right, but that pavement is so bad right now.
Chief, I know Steve Keller has put and held National Grid feet to the fire on pavement and sidewalks and everything else.
Making sure everything is fair.
I'm going to call in, go in to Terry. So a couple of questions. No disruption of service during the project?
No.
Okay, so no disruption of service. Now, we're talking a lot about the Winthrop piece in terms of construction. But construction along Short Beach, how is that going to affect traffic? When you're coming in from Revere?
You're referencing the DCR parking lot.
Yeah, State Police jurisdiction, as we refer to it.
Right, but I mean, we still need that to get out of Winthrop. So whatever work you're doing there affects us just as much as this in a lot of ways.
Yeah, and we'll manage the traffic flow just like we've done in Winthrop.
So there'll always be one lane open and maybe that little side lane for one in and one out?
No, we've asked for that. Again, there'll be some times where we probably might get diverted up Winthrop Ave for some portion of the project. But the intent was to make sure that we have access coming in from Revere and leaving through Revere during the project.
I think the biggest impact you're going to see is site delivery. Truck blows up, they move something off, they drop the lane. They won't be duration closures.
I mean, it's stuff that has to get done. But just let everybody know, it's going to be a major disruption for the better part of two and a half years. And you don't talk here about going from Argyle to Medcap Square?
We don't.
Oh, you're not doing anything?
That's already been done.
Oh, that's already been done?
Yeah, that was part of the, what I call Phase 2, when we upgraded the substation at Argyle Street. We then extended those lines.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Chief, you talked about, you know, allowing residents to park on Revere Street till 7:00 in the morning. I know this is Council Flockhart and Council Ruggiero's jurisdiction. But I live on Revere Street, and I have one spot in my driveway. I drive my kids to school. They have to be at school at 8:30. You know, am I going to have to park in a municipal lot every night? Or is it possible that we can have something where it's more like 8:30, 9:00 o'clock, where people have to be out of there? Steve, I think you want to add something to this.
That's exactly my question, what the work hours are going to be. Because this is one of, as you know, this is one of two major ways in and out of town. There's going to be a big rush in the morning, and there's going to be a big rush in the evening. So what were your proposed, I guess, work hours for this project?
Right now, we've laid our plan out based on 7:00 to 3:00.
And the idea was to get them off the road by the afternoon rush coming in from Revere. We want, we don't want them on the road at 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon because whatever we decide here is what's going to happen in Revere. And 7:00 to 3:00 is kind of a consistent construction pattern and practice.
Right, yeah, I just, you know.
And this is going to run right into the traffic problem we already have on Revere Street for the schools, for the Fort Bank School?
Yep.
In the fall, and school starts again, right?
Right, well, they're not going to be starting till almost the beginning of school.
Right.
And just one other point that I'd make is I understand we're diverting traffic up into the Highlands, but the residents there are not accustomed to the flow of traffic that this would require. So I'm not sure if some work might need to be done in advance, if, you know, maybe I'm speaking out of school here. But, you know, so people aren't speeding up Cliff Ave or down Highland, Upland, excuse me, first thing in the morning while parents are trying to get kids to school. They're trying to get out of town before the construction starts. So there's going to be some coordination.
Might need extra presence.
There'll be police details. National Grid is committed to the police details. If we have to put one up at the intersections up there, we certainly would do that. I live on Highland. I don't want to see anyone racing by my house either. So certainly, I'm on the affected impacted area. So, you know, we'll do that anywhere in town. National Grid has always been pretty helpful with that.
We should have some signage to alert people that this is going to happen.
Yep, there'll be signage. There's also, National Grid will come out with community information packages for the people who are impacted in that area. We'll make sure they expand it up through the Highlands, Cliff, Quincy, and Upland, and not just the people on Revere Street, residents on Revere Street.
Chief, is it going to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, is it going to be just a couple spots at a time? Because it's going to move down the street. So it's only going to be like, you know, like this week, these spaces are impacted this week? Okay.
When the manholes go in, that's probably the biggest impact, right? You've got to figure out to leave this area, it's not going to be a one location. Once they cycle with the conduit and then the manholes, it's kind of been, that's made about 100 foot, it's probably 200 foot side.
Okay. So like half a football field at a time?
How many manholes is this going to be? I mean, how far are you spacing these apart?
There is...
They're usually existing manholes, is that correct?
No.
All new manholes?
They're all Brenda.
The existing cables are direct buried. We intend to, again, that was new technology, we'll go into the new conduits, new manholes, pull over the old ones.
And that's nine from the Revere Number 7 Substation to Argyle Street?
There's quite a few, and that's just...
That's just in Winthrop.
Counsel, yeah.
Council Free Know. If I could have a question?
Yes.
Rich, so I love the fact that you guys come in after the plans are made and not before they're made. It's a full project, all new conduit. Did you consider coming across the back through the marsh?
I can't speak to that level of plan. Doctor, can we be able to speak that?
No, through the marsh itself?
Oh, the back, behind there, there's a, you know, it was filled in land. We call it a natural habitat now, but it was filled in land at one time. So, I mean...
So we come down Bayou from the DCR parking lot into Bayou into Argyle. Is that, Council Free Know, is that what you...
Correct. I mean, they put pipelines everywhere and across natural, you know, barriers all the time. And, you know, we also have a project on Revere Street, I think, this year, which is also going to be an impact.
But not this year.
Not this year? Okay. So there'll be almost three years of construction in that whole area. That'll be disruptive for all the neighbors. So it's not just that. So I just, so there was no engineering done on possibly doing it through the marsh?
The plan was to keep it in the public way, easier to maintain access if needed during, you know, winter conditions and things of that nature. I believe that's also an environmental area down once you get to the end of Bayou.
Just, you know, it's a lot of voltage. And, you know, you know, it's just thinking out of the box, you know, it's going to be a lot of, you know, they're doing the summer tunnel this year. I mean, there's going to be traffic nightmares for our communities in our town. Suffolk Downs is going up this year. It's just going to be really inconvenient. It's just a real bad time to be doing this.
I understand that. I guess, you know, all of us here report some severe storms and the challenges of trying to get through assets in the middle of Winthrop that are, you know, in the areas where you suggest...
No, I realize that, but...
Also tied to the influence back there, which we...
There's going to be tidal influence everywhere on this.
We don't have water main or sewer back there for the purposes, you can't excavate without hitting the water table a foot or two under the surface. So I don't know what that would do to construction costs or even feasibility of doing it. I understand your concern, and it is a concern, it's a concern of ours as well. Project is going to have a huge impact, you know, it's very heavily traveled roadway. But I don't think it's feasible to beat utilities in the marsh getting homes.
Do they do traffic counts as to how many cars use that road in the morning and the afternoon?
I don't have traffic counts.
National Grid doesn't do any traffic counts before they do a project like this to see how many residents they're impacting?
So, Dan, one meeting we did have with the traffic engineer and traffic specialist were there.
Yeah, we have a traffic consultant that's been working quite a long since the beginning of this whole project. And they've got access to that data. Very, that's all we have, traffic manager. So we, you know, we've achieved how it's going to work, you know, along the whole list.
How old was this line that we're replacing now?
It's all 50, 60s.
Two of the lines were, we talked about one, two, three, and seven.
Any other questions for the gentleman in this? All right, Stephen.
Will National Grid make someone available for neighbors in the area that have questions, comments, concerns, and so they can go directly to the source?
Yeah, that was what I was going to, the chief was kind of heading down that road. So what we have on the project, I handle day-to-day relations with the city. So, and she seems to know, you know, but in this year, so we actually have a stakeholder management group. She's not here, she's on vacation, she's always up. Got the whole website set up, so there'll be tons of communication, you know. And that website, we update it daily as to where we're going. We will be, you know, when we start to do construction, we'll be letting it actually handle it. You know, deliver the notices to the residents and explain it, you know, with the bill, they'll make sure.
Three yes.
So there'll be plenty of...
Okay.
Question, you have three other plan numbers. Are they all included in this plan?
Yeah, that's accurate. There's three circuits. Are you referencing the agenda?
Yeah, they're referencing on the agenda. It says three...
Yeah, there's two other completely different projects that are on the agenda for the city as well.
Okay, so are you going to, why don't you start with those two? Because I think we got all the questions on this one. Why don't you give us the second one? You're going to do both of them?
Ah, yes. Good evening. My name is Adel Lockhead Nambad. Here with National Grid Electric at 170, that Crest Street, Walden. And I'm here today for a petition on a project that is going to be held on Summer Street. It's on the corner of Summer and Cottage, Summer Set Avenue and Cottage Parkway. We're proposing to install two 4-inch conduits that's going to be side into a pole. And it'll go directly to a bolt on the sidewalk. This is to be in the customer's building.
For the new development of 10 subsets, quarter, I said the quarter subset, quarter high. They need to bring in three-phase power, power that develops.
100 feet...
Is that in yet?
Are you going to be taking down poles to put this conduit under?
We are not going to be taking down poles. We're going to install a conduit from a pole to, we won't be installing the new poles, replacing what's existing there. So we're going to install conduits on it.
We had a lot of concern for a lot of years about the double poles in Winthrop and trying to get them taken down. And I noticed a new pole I just saw go up on Thornton Park, which is one of our prettiest streets in town. And it's just a pole. It is not... And it's just a pole, it has nothing on it, and I don't know why that went up, but, you know, I don't know if you put it up?
When we put a pole, we do ask Verizon to take all the poles. So what we have with Verizon is that we install and Verizon takes them out. When, there is a concern of second pole, we would like for you guys to always reach out to us. Our intention is that poles are taken down by Verizon. But if there is a pole, we'd like to hear from you as soon as possible. We can always reach out to you, yes.
But I think you're well aware, as I've spoken to Mr. Cameron before, that there are a lot of double poles in town that have not been taken down. We've even held up a project that you want to do on Bowden Street until you take the poles down. Now I'm hearing that a new pole has gone up, but the double poles are not coming down.
It's very unfortunate, this is something we always refer back to Verizon on. And we, we do our best in which we have what we call a quota. So when there is a pole that needs to be taken down, Verizon is notified right away.
But this sounds like passing the buck, you know, we go to National Grid, you pass to Verizon, we call Verizon, they say, well, National Grid has told us, you know, we go back to you, well, it's Verizon.
They are very responsible taking those poles down. And I, to my knowledge is that whenever I get a pole, primarily I work in the city of Everett and in North Shore. And whenever I hear from anyone concerned about a pole, I usually personally contact Verizon and make sure that they take it down. That's the best we can do.
Last I heard, there were 98 double poles in Winthrop.
It's, it is, it was.
But these are not poles you're putting, these are conduits, is that correct?
I don't mean to step on here, just only from the meeting today.
Yeah.
So this is a request from ten Somerset to feed their building. What they're gonna be doing is putting a vault in front of the building. They're asking for a grant location in the sidewalk, right in front of the building at ten Somerset. That's where they're, they're. Let's go, I'm sorry, the, let's go inside, let's. The transformers, three transformers go inside that vault to feed the building with three-phase power. What they will need to do is they're gonna replace, they have to replace two poles coming down Cottage, Somerset Road. But, and I've been, and Counselor Park, you're absolutely right, there were a million double poles in town, there's a lot of them. And I'm fighting with you to try to get them resolved. And I got a guarantee from, from Dan that these aren't gonna be a typical double pole situation. This is, they realized that we have to get the sidewalks in for the CBD project, and they're committed to getting those poles out within 30 days of installation of the new poles. They have to put new poles in because they have to be higher poles, with only two of them. Then we're gonna, we're gonna come out of one of the, one pole that's remaining with conduit into that new vault. And it's imperative that that work gets done before our sidewalk, if an asphalt gets down on that roadway.
So that's happening now?
This is a customer request, it's not an action.
Right, and is this impacting the trees in any way?
If we might be just addressed, it's a concern anywhere about double poles, but a little bit of imagination is present for what else? But the way that the hierarchy goes, we're at the top, and National Grid sets all the poles. We transfer first. Next is any of the conduits. So hey, you know, with the view of both the streetlights in your homes and your environment, all right? So the town has to transfer. Next is any communication, and that could be Comcast, it could be a private fiber. So part of the problem, believe it or not, is we have people attached to our poles. These companies have been sold and resold and, you know, so we do our best to police it. But a lot of times it takes a long time to get to the right person to transfer. Once it gets to Verizon, they're actually not bad, all right? They're only committed to one or two, or one emergency, but they'll come in and do the technical thing for it. So there is a database, we've all participated in it, but it's, it's very difficult for National Grid to police every one of them. In this case, as Steve just referenced on Cottage Park, it's about as simple a construction as you can get. Because it's only, I don't even get the spiral on there, a lot of that's newer technology. There's a couple of streetlights, so it's very minimal as to what has to be transferred to a new concept. But some of these poles have pretty sophisticated communication cables on there. And the companies that, we don't even know who they are, you know, they might have come before you guys to get approval to do it. But then they get sold and resold, and it's very difficult to track them down. But we're doing, you know, we're doing our best to, to try to move that along, to get it to Verizon for the poles getting moved.
Okay.
So just to be clear, this is, we're just putting something on top of an already existing pole? We're not building a new one?
No, right now there's, there's a pole line with one wire, it's called three-phase. And on it's a team that's building the three-phase, most commercial streetlights building the three-phase power. So adding, all we're doing is adding two more lines to the actual pole itself. All the two poles are fine with, but two have to be replaced because they.
And they'll be double for a while?
For 30 days, not a while, not a while, for 30 days.
30 days?
That's what the commitment was to us, 30 days.
I can live with 30 days, it's two years I can't live with.
There's no private communication on any of these poles, so that's probably very complex.
Okay. All right, I will trust you, Dan.
Dan, you wanna talk about the Somerset one?
Correct, yeah, just so this will not interrupt, disturb or affect the current CBD project. I guess a more of a question for Steve, but.
No, it's independent of our work.
Okay, perfect.
That's, so long as they get it done before our sidewalks and asphalt.
Got it, okay.
That's why we wanted to get them before you guys, as soon as possible.
Okay, and your, your third project is on Cottage Park Road?
They're getting easier, this is an easy.
Okay, I hope so.
This third one is also tied to the CBD project and actually a petition through National Grid, but from our contractor G O S. So this is to repower our street, our new streetlights down in the center, you know?
There's a, there's a power box there that needs to be relocated. So when they move it, we have to put a handhold in to make any level of connectivity.
So we can do the landscaping and the lights in the center, that's, that should be an easy one, nobody should complain about that one. Okay.
Can I just ask National Grid?
Any other questions?
To, to address pedestrian safety on all three projects? I had a question inside the room here about pedestrian safety. Revere Street and Crest Ave, busy intersection, a lot of pedestrians. People like to walk out of Winthrop, through the Short Beach area. So what's the plan for pedestrian safety?
We're gonna work, you know, with the police department. We always, we always, on every, every one of our sites, whether it's Gas or Electric.
And I'll, I know the concern was sometimes that police details are on either side of the project. And would you have someone guiding people if they have to cross a street closer to the project and stuff like that, Dan?
Well, as you, well, we meet and meeting with your guys.
Okay, we'll make sure that, yep.
Whatever we need, if we need one dedicated just to pedestrians, you know, that's.
Thank you.
When we do the sidewalk work, when we get to the phase of final restoration, one side, one side of the road will be done. Always have a sidewalk open, I guess that's, I think that's what we're alluding to.
Okay, this is a public hearing, any people in the audience have any questions for these gentlemen? Mr. Dowd.
Thank you. Jack, our precinct three, seems like the 98 people have to get in line to have a double pole taken down from in front of their house. And yet we're going to give a new developer in town first preference to suit their needs. I suggest that you do a handful at least of taking down a few of these double poles. So the list doesn't go higher before this project gets done, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Is there anyone in the at-home audience that has any questions in the public hearing? Any hands up, Larissa?
No hands.
Okay, you want to go back to the council, go ahead.
The, the blocks on Somerset, those sidewalks, and I don't know the new design, Steve, are pretty narrow. You know, they're only about four or five feet, will that hinder any handicap accessibility around?
It'll be.
Eighty-eight.
Okay, nobody have any other questions? We'll move these three petitions to New Business. Do you have any other, do you have another question?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. The next item on the agenda is public hearing, I mean, public comment. Public comment is available to anyone. Again, the number is 1301-715-8592, with an ID number of 82094396451. Is there any public comment? Anyone in the room that have public comment? Jack, I'll miss it out.
Thank you. It's good to be out of the house and to be amongst friends. I appreciate opening this room up so Republican Speaker. I'm reading from the latest opinion by the town's attorneys concerning 151 Pauline Street. Excuse me. There's three pages of this opinion. I'm just gonna take a couple of lines excerpts from it, so make it brief. You have requested an opinion of the source of the town's title to property at 151 Pauline Street. Questions have been raised at the premises may be portioned and described as a so-called donation deed, skipping a few lines. The deeds to the town from the Cummings family describing a certain piece of land bounded by Pauline Street containing 7.55 acres. At a public forum a couple of years ago before COVID, it was stated, I'm not reading from this now, I'm just paraphrasing. It was stated that the town can do what they want with 7.55 acres, according to this opinion. In all studies, maps, pictures, open, open space and recreation plans, Ingleside Park is described as 10 or 11 acres. The reason it went down from 13 acres, the original donation by the Ingles at all in the town of Winthrop. The reason it went down to 10 or 11 acres is because Hagman, no, Walden Street, excuse me, Walden Street was increased from 30 feet, which is the railroad property, to about 75 feet. So that eliminated approximately two acres of land, leaving 10 or 11 acres left. According to studies done by the town, done by McGregor and Associates, and then done once again, that was in 2005, and then once again in 2014 by the town manager and other people. Another paragraph, use of the premises. I researched the records at Suffolk County Registry of Deeds. Now, this is Copeland Page on their deed researchers. I researched the records at Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and found that there were no town meeting votes recorded evidencing the purpose for which the premises is to be used. And the town is unable to provide any such documents of the town. I've read, and I have copies of, the town in 1903, accepting the conditions of Ingleside Park. So when I read from this opinion, it definitely contradicts what I know and what a lot of other people know. I'm wondering, the planning board was, was waiting for another opinion from Copeland and Page before they sent their plan for the Center Business District to Rules and Ordinance, and then to you guys to vote on, which you did two weeks ago. Has there been a newer opinion from Copeland and Page as of this date today?
Ken, I don't know what you're reading, Jack, or what the date is on the document you're reading. So it's gonna be hard to be to determine whether there is one that's due within the one you're reading.
Everybody has copies of this.
I don't, and just appreciate that I stepped into this about six weeks ago.
I handed this, I handed all this information to the whole board at one time, along with pictures, plans, open space and recreation plans, et cetera. I gave you all a copy of this, okay? So if there's no new plan, which the planning board was waiting for, no new opinion, excuse me, by Copeland and Page, does the town, does the town now have the right to develop on 7.55 acres? As is this document?
Again, it's public comment, Mr. President, we'll get back to him.
Thank you, Jack. Again, there's only a three minutes for public comment. Before we go on to the next public comment, we also had a public hearing of another issue that was open and it should have been done in public hearing. So going back to a public hearing, the question is, the town council's vote to authorize the acceptance and expend $5,542,928 in the form of a grant awarded by the U.S. Department of Treasury to be administered to the Town of Winthrop Finance Department. That is a public hearing, each motion has to have a public hearing before we go into a little business and vote on this. So that is a public hearing on that. Does anybody want to be heard on the public hearing on the $500 million? Go ahead.
Wish it was $500 million.
$524.
The problems are solved.
That would be nice.
So the Finance Committee did meet earlier this evening on this. We have voted to accept the money. There are obviously stipulations with this money and with learning them daily. You know, it's, it's, it's not a gift to spend as we choose, it's a gift with many restrictions, but we did vote to accept the money. We, we're coming back with positive recommendation to accept the money.
Okay, anyone else want to be heard on that? If not, I will close the public hearing on that issue. Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to be heard? Go ahead.
Karen Travis, precinct two. I understand they're going to accept the money, but before it is spent, will we be told over how much time is allotted? Does it have to be spent within a year or do you have five years? And exactly what it can be spent on?
The money, the money has until, I believe, the beginning part of fiscal '24 to be spent.
So it's two years from now?
Yes, two and a half years roughly.
Just committed, committed by that date?
Yeah.
So it has to be committed by, to a project, and we have until 2/26, December 31st, 2/26 to spend it?
To spend it. Again, guidelines are changing. It can be used to offset any losses in revenues we've had due to COVID. It can also be used on infrastructure projects related to, my understanding, water, sewer and drainage. That's the latest, I don't know if the.
It's on the draft, Attorney Revenue, Treasury Regulations, draft regulations. We're waiting for the final regulations published and come out.
It's not as, you know, free, so to speak, as we thought it might be. You know, we had heard it was infrastructure, we didn't know how specific it was on infrastructure. Infrastructure seems to be changing in terms of IT and other stuff. This does not seem to be something, as of now, anyway, that does include that. So I think, I know the chief, acting town manager, is constantly looking at this and hopefully we will have more news on it.
Just on, on the public health side too, any expenses or future expenses on public health related to COVID?
Any further comments on this issue?
I have somebody on.
Okay, Diana, I think she.
Diana, if you want to unmute.
Diana, if you want to unmute.
Yeah, thank you, this is Diane, yeah. I guess just to elaborate on Jack's comment from earlier, I think this is probably just more of a general observation about what I've seen, and especially with respect to Ingleside. What I've observed over the last several months is- Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So what I've observed over the last several months, and this is in follow-up to Jack's comments from earlier about Ingleside specifically as an example, is an overall lack of transparency. So I am pretty close to Ingleside, I'm a neighbor. And when I'm watching, as I take my kids to camp, next door is a ripped-up parking lot, and I had to ask around to figure out why. But then I come to learn that that area is now part of CBD, news to me as well. And I understand that there have been several meetings about CBD, and, you know, unfortunately, one of them had to do with our town Christmas tree being removed, which was a big surprise to a lot of us to find out that that wasn't being replaced. But at the end of the day, let's not be surprised about what's going on with Ingleside and with the skating rink, because that area affects a lot of people, and I understand that nothing is set in stone yet, and we don't have a developer who's want to bid or anything. But at the end of the day, that's one of our most important spots in the town, that park, and it's important to everybody. So I think, I guess my general message is, I'm getting a lot of email alerts, because I'm signed up to receive those email alerts from the town about what's going on, whether to build a project. I'm getting a lot of email alerts about traffic and how to get to, you know, CBS now. But I have no idea how to even access the most recent plan for CBD, which I think is pretty concerning, since I live next door. And this is such an important spot for, not just, obviously not just me, but the entire town. So I think just my message would be that transparency is something that I would like to see more of with respect to the plans happening in my neighborhood. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Diane. Is there anyone else who wanted to talk on the public hearing on the $5 million? Here we now, we'll close that public hearing now, and we will go back to public comment. Is there anyone online for just public comment? Other than Diane, anyone in the audience? Hearing none, we'll move on to correspondence. I know we got a lot of correspondence from people wishing to be on the tree committee, but what other correspondence did we receive?
We did receive one from Mike Demento, who requested on June 26th about a no red code being reported. And he requested that to be read at this meeting.
Okay, no red code was reported over the shooting, is that what?
Right, immediately.
Okay. We'll make Chief Lenny, who does the red code, aware of that.
Code red, right?
Code red, code red. Okay, no other correspondence, we'll move on to committee reports, Finance Commission.
Finance Commission did meet earlier this evening on two things. One, as we just stated, was in regards to the, accepting the OPERA money of 5.4 million, which we do have positive recommendation on. The other item that we took up was concerning the dog park and golf shed RFP. We did put out an RFP, the town put out an RFP, the bids came in. I believe the low bid was approximately $125,000 over the money we have allotted. We had a couple of options to try to come back with a recommendation to take that money out of a stabilization fund or go out to rebid. We are coming back with a recommendation to go out to rebid. We still know that there's some issues that we have to come back with clarification, but that's the, we do not feel we're in a position right now to take money out of savings to finish that project. So our recommendation is to try to rebid it.
Rules and ordinance?
Sure, so we met earlier tonight on the potential drafting of a flag raising ordinance. So pretty much what we, we're just in the beginning stages of identifying parties that could potentially be at the table when these determinations about flags on town hall being raised are handled. And so I think that we came to the conclusion that we didn't want to create a, you know, give this authority to a single person or to create a new entity. So we decided that, or nothing's been decided yet, but we've identified a couple of different committees in town that we'd like to see these applications go through, potentially giving the power to a member or a delegate of a certain committee to say one way or another about that. We want to have a couple of different groups involved, but we also want to be cognizant of people's time when they sign up for the various committees and not to overburden these volunteers who do, who would be working on this. So that's the direction that the committee, I think, wants to go on. And if anybody on the council has any input on a direction that we, they think we should be going, I'd be more than happy to talk about that as far as which committees, which representatives, from which town department should be involved.
Town Council President threw you to Vice President Christopher. What, any specific committees that you would like to discuss that you were talking about potentially going through?
Sure, so while nothing's in stone, I think that we thought that there should be some representation from the Memorials Committee, the Commission on Diversity Inclusion, the commission that we recently created. We also felt that it was important that someone from town administration have at least the ability to put input, if not the ability to veto a, something, because there is going to be, there's an administrative element to raising the flag if someone wanted to put, have an event or something like that. So we felt like it was important to make sure that the town administration knew that these things were going on and have their input as it was going up.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of the committee reports. Any other committees meet? Hearing none, let's move on to town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as you stated at the beginning of this meeting, we certainly had a devastating and disappointing event over the last week and a half. An event that, you see the crime scene tape has left and the news cameras that have gone. But it's an event that we are still struggling with and still managing. I think the community is struggling. I think we're still managing this event, will be managing it for some time. There is certainly, Mike, I'm grateful for the police department, fire department, EMS, who responded to that scene and did their very best to revive lives. And I'm certainly grateful for the sergeant who ended the horrific event. And, you know, after the fact, we still have to take care of our employees. We still have to make sure that they receive stress and counseling for a traumatic event like that. That event was three individuals' lives were taken on that day, and it could have been easily eight lives that could have been taken that day. We're well aware of how that event could have ended. But we're on it, and we want to make sure everyone's comfortable knowing that we're taking care of those people who did respond. And I have the great team that came together quickly, from public health to superintendent schools to the police department, fire department, EMS, Larissa, who would put the vigil together single-handedly almost, so all those things matter. How we respond matters. And certainly, you know, I did make comments during the press releases that we still have a work as a community to do. I think this is really an eye-opening, awakening experience for us, how we treat one another within the community, how we have discourse with one another, how we respect each other even though we might not, we might disagree with each other. So I asked Merritt early to come today, just to brief the council on, you know, worrying about employees, but we're also worrying about the community, what we have done so far for the community, what we have planned on doing for the community, and when can we expect that? So Merritt, thank you.
So as you said, myself, through public health, has been working really closely with the public schools. The Superintendent Howard has really put her focus more on the children and families that are potentially impacted and have been impacted by this event. I, myself and Lieutenant DeGherian, myself and Lieutenant DeGherian and our social worker, our crisis intervention social worker, really have been focused on the community as a whole and helping facilitate, in concert with the public schools, a more coordinated effort. So we started off by canvassing the areas. We walked the path that we called. For me, I found it extremely eye-opening. When you look at the amount of houses that are behind there, the amount of multifamily units that are there, you know, this is, this is an event that will have exponential eyes on it, that will have, you know, and we did, on our first canvas, we did what we thought, and we still had folks coming up to us and saying, I was a bit down the street, which I'm thrilled that they felt comfortable coming up and talking with Chief Delante and talking with Lieutenant DeGherian. But that's exactly what we want, and we're asking the community to do. So we're going to be continuing, I'm thinking of this as like a concentric circle. We really went at the areas that we knew were directly impacted just by the scenes. Now we're looking at more, you know, the next degree, the next degree. Winthrop, as we know, is so connected, which is a strength. But unfortunately, you know, and I've said it a few times, this is, this is almost like chasing COVID, but instead we're chasing trauma. So we have to find the people, and then find the people, and find the people, and encourage people to come to us when they need help or when they need support. So that's kind of what we've been doing. So now we are then focusing past the geographical locations and looking at conducting additional outreach to groups and residents that have been impacted. Currently planning specific community forums, space to support Black residents, Jewish residents, additional witnesses, and those impacting in ways that we may not have recognized yet. We are really leaning on outside agencies that do this for a living and do this in a best practices. So we're leaning heavily on East Boston Neighborhood Health Center, the North Suffolk Mental Health, Suffolk County DA's office, the DeValley Institute of Boston Public Health Commission, and an organization called Instill We Rise. So we, and we're also trying to gather the information from the community as to what they want to express, what their needs are. I think linking people together that are feeling vulnerable for the same reasons is kind of where we're starting to organize so that we know the right people to come in and provide that support. So that's kind of our game plan going forward in the next however many weeks that we'll be at this.
I just want to also, you'll put out there that our insurance carrier was emailing me on Sunday asking what they could do for us, what services we could bring in. Merritt is coordinating with the Meyer, and certainly, I, we're going to share an after-action report of everything we've done on the psychological service side for our employees. No one's names, just, this is what we've done in a general outline form, just to make sure that they're satisfied with how we responded to this. It's obviously very important, as well as after-action reports. You don't put together, you don't respond to an incident like this unless you have worked together, that you have developed these relationships over time, years in advance. So one of the things that COVID did do for us, it brought our team together in an unexpected way and helped us during this. NMLAC Northeast Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council did respond in. Boston Police Captain was there right shortly after I was there and brought 30 other units in for us. Revere, Chelsea, the Transit Police Department all responded to help. Winthrop, and, you know, some of those people left at 2:00 on Sunday morning. So thanks go out to them. We have a lot of thank yous to write. Citizens that have come up to the station to support us certainly have supported us throughout the event, paid for food on the night of the vigil. The community has been wonderful, and we appreciate their patience. We are still working this, and we will move forward, and we will have a plan to present to the council how we move forward. We're hoping at the next council meeting and every council meeting thereafter to have a plan in place on how we move forward. So I appreciate all the council support and comments and emails and text messages and calls, you know, asking what we need and how you could support us. So we certainly, that doesn't go unrecognized. And, you know, State Representative and the state senator and, you know, the governor and lieutenant governor, our partners from Revere came to support us on the night of the vigil, and their state delegation. So it matters that everyone shows the families, most important people in this whole event, is how did we make the families feel? Did they feel supported? Did they feel they were welcome in Winthrop and that we wanted to support them? And I can tell you, this afternoon, I attended Romana Cooper's services in East Boston, and as soon as I walked through the door, her sister said, Larissa is wonderful. All the stuff that she does for the town. But they are also very complimentary of the police department and the first responders and what everyone's doing for them. That's the most important thing to me when we're running an event like this. Obviously, my office's safety is the most important thing, and how we make the victims feel, and do we support them. And I think this town really showed, and will continue to show over the many months and years to come, that we will support their families. I think that's the biggest thing I can leave in their memories. I can't help them bring their loved ones back. So thank you again, everyone, the public, as well as all the people who supported us in government and, of course, my offices, firefighters, and EMS, people that responded that day. Obviously, we had another incident that is never a pleasurable incident, 319 Pleasant Street did have a fire. You know, those people in that house are fine, they have a lot of damage there. The school superintendent is working with the family, trying to help them through that crisis as well. I do have to report back on A, OPERA's money, and I do not believe by any stretch of the OPERA's guidance and draft that the clock tower will be funded or could be funded through OPERA's. I promised Council Farino that we'd have an answer at the next council meeting. I just wanted to report back that Parks and Recs, we did cancel the last barbecue. We'll reschedule that barbecue out of respect for the victims that lost their lives. We canceled that barbecue, but we will reschedule that. Miller's Field will be opening. I know that's certainly, we want that open, we want people exercising, we want it open more. I understand some of the councils have urged me to try to find more money to open it longer hours during the day. And the tennis courts, as they get completed, we need to, you know, figure out how we're going to manage those tennis courts as well. So there's two policy decisions I'd be looking towards the council. One, A, Miller's Field, and are we returning the field to the school department? Or are we retaining custody, control, and authority over that field, working in conjunction with the school department? Superintendent has asked me for some information about when the date is that we turn it back to the school department. So that's an issue that we need to address before I do any MOUs with the school on this. I need to know what direction to go in, and that's certainly within the council. And then the tennis courts, our town-owned tennis courts. And again, the same question's going to come up. How do we want to manage those? Do we want Parks and Recs managing those in conjunction with the schools? Or do we want the schools to be managing the tennis courts that are out in front of the schools? So those are two important issues, but that, you know, I would like a response or an answer, at least a point and direction on that, be it September comes quickly. So we'd like to have those MOUs in place if we're going to, if the town's going to continue to manage them. I still not have, have no information on the ferry and DEP funding or DOT funding on that, so we will get back and circle back on that. But we're doing an analysis now when the funding will run out for the ferry, if, by our reserves, and what direction we should be going in without any commitment. I know my finance department's going to tell me I can't run the ferry unless we have at least a commitment from DEP or DOT to continue funding that ferry. So those are the major things. I know I probably left some stuff off that I probably should have- I know I probably left some stuff off that I probably should have, I'll, I'll try to make sure I get it on the next agenda. It's been a whirlwind over a week and a half and will rebound, so thank you again.
Does anybody have any questions for Terry on any of the issues? Go ahead, Jim.
Thanks, Terry. And, you know, first, there's so many things to go out for the way this town responded. First of all, we, you know, we got to meet, the council got to meet Ramona and David's families, and they were just incredibly gracious and I, I just can't even imagine the pain that they feel. And they were so, so welcoming and it was, and it was great to see. But there's so many things that could go, but I, you know, and you hate to single out anybody, but I just want to thank the police department for their actions, their response time, how they handled the situation. And, and, I mean, you know, as horrific as it is, we know it could have been worse and just thank you to your, to your team there. Just a couple of things on Ingleside Park, just to update people on the playground situation. We, I know Director Driscoll has been working tirelessly to try to make sure that that thing was done by July 4th. I, I think the company's having a few issues themselves, but I think that it's, it's been cleared out. And I know the equipment is in and I, and I know Sean hopes to get that done by the end of the week. I know his programs start, started today and that's fantastic to see that it's back and, and I thank Sean for his help. And I do think that that playground will be up and running within a week. And on Miller Field, I know there's, we got correspondents today that there will be hours open. I know this board has said, this council has said, since that was there, that we want it open day and night for public. We want people that are paying for that to be able to go and walk it, and it's not going to be open as of now for night. So I, you know, I, I think we need to work in that direction to make sure that it's accessible, times where it could be for people to use it. And I think, you know, I, I think it's important that we come under some sort of MOU with the schools to, however, whatever direction we want, but I think it needs to be done sooner rather than, rather than later. And one last thing on the CBD, you know, Geosa's been doing a great job. Steve's been doing a great job. I noticed last week, coming down Woodside, now again, there were, there were three of us that weren't eligible to vote and we weren't allowed to speak from the previous town manager or whatever. So my understanding has always been that since the French, French Square's being enlarged, basically to go over to Samuels, there's no turnaround coming down, coming down Woodside, getting on the Hagman Extension, you can't turn around to go up to Bartlett. Whether people are looking for parking, whether they're going to Bank of America or East Boston Savings or whatever, my, I've always been under the impression that they were going to enable a left turn at the bottom of Woodside to go up Bartlett. Now looking at the extension they're putting at the end of, in front of Savisys basically is, and there is no left turn. I think that's a potential, huge problem for this town that it's forcing all traffic out onto Pauline Street, which is going to create more of a bottleneck getting back to CVS. People looking for parking are not going to be able to go down and go around the center. They're going to all be forced out. I know time is of the essence and I know the landscape architect is, is, this is what's causing some of this, but I really think it needs to be looked at quickly because I don't think people realize that they're not going to have a lot of access points. You know, I know we don't have a lot of time left. They're moving at a pretty good clip, but I think there's something that needs to be looked at.
Just, and I'll be happy to look at the minutes in the, in the votes that took place. It's my recollection that the council voted for the actual design and the completed design of the project. We were actually directed by the council not just to go and get a landscape architect, but it also would have to be peer reviewed. We had another layer of peer reviewing that, that whole landscape architect and design process. So I, again, I think it would have to take a full vote of the council to reverse and direct, but I'd be happy to come back next meeting with some information. You know, the left-hand turn there was eliminated a long time ago and I got emails when we did it temporarily by Virginia Wilder, the former executive secretary of the Sleckman, saying that a person was injured there with a cow making that left-hand turn and that's why it was eliminated years ago when that she felt it was a safety issue if we put it back in there. So, you know, be happy to look at anything, but again, there's only so much jurisdiction we have. It would be a change order as well on the landscape architect's side. So let's pull the minutes from, from those meetings and find out what was voted on and how it was voted and what needs to be done.
I don't think there's a question that there was a vote. I, I think we've seen the minutes of the vote. I, I just want to make sure everybody understands what they voted for and the repercussions of the traffic pattern. I, I don't disagree that it could be a danger. I think, like anything else, it could be safely done, and I think there's always been that ability to go around French Square and that ability is going to be lost. I don't disagree that it was, that was voted on. I don't, I, I know by six people anyway. I just don't know if everybody fully understood all the repercussions. But just a quick look-through and then go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for town manager? Hearing on just a brief school committee report, school committee had a special meeting on the 28th and they ratified a contract for a gentleman by name of Noel Velez as the business manager for the school department. He replaces Sue Echols, who unfortunately we lost to retirement this year. I want to congratulate Lisa for all the work she has done with this trauma counseling. She has been working day and night along with Meredith to make sure that everybody that needs counseling has counseling. I know that we spent one evening down at the senior center together and people did come in that were shaken and they wanted to be counseled and, and they're doing a wonderful job in doing that, reaching out to the people, giving them treatment for any trauma. And I want to point out that the vigil that was hosted by Larissa, and what a great job she did on doing that vigil, was really an awe-filling experience because so many people came out and they came out in unity to pray, to sing and to hold candles in remembrance of these two people that passed. And it was really heartwarming to see so much of Wentworth come out as a unity. And that's what we're looking for. We had unity in the council and now we need unity in the community. Okay, and we'll move on to old business. Motion, Jim, you want to take the motion?
Sure. There's a motion that the town council vote to authorize the town of Wentworth to accept and expend the amount of $5,542,928 in the form of a grant awarded by the United States Department of the Treasury to be administered by the town of Wentworth's Finance Department. This grant is made from the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund in the Treasury of the United States, established by Section 9901 of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, OPERA, or take any other action relative there, too. This did come out of committee with positive recommendation.
And so it does not need a second? Is there any discussion on the motion? We had the public hearing on it. Is there any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye when your name is called. I think for $5 million, we take a roll call.
Counselor DeGero.
Yes.
Counselor Flackatt.
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncorie.
Yes.
Okay, the next thing is to appropriate $80,000, the E.B. Newton Clock. I think that's also yours, Jim.
It is. There's a motion that the town council vote to appropriate $80,000 from the E.B. Newton Fund balance to new account entitled Fiscal 22. Clock Tower repairs for repairs to the E.B. Newton Clock Tower or take any other action relative there, too. This money would come out of the E.B. Newton Fund balance, reserve fund basically, which has roughly $175,000 in it now. This was not taken up in finance because, you know, at the last meeting, we were waiting for the town manager, acting town manager to come in with, with a recommendation if we were able to use OPERA funds. We could, we, this should go back to finance and we would come back with this and we would ask that this motion be, be postponed to the next council meeting so we can have a finance committee meeting and then the plan would be to vote on it at the next meeting. And I would ask the, I would ask for this to be advertised, too, by the council.
All right, this motion was passed back at the last meeting, 7 to 2. We want to, can you put it over?
No, no, no. It was, it was, the amendment was passed to make it 80,000. We waited on the funding that I think, it might have been, and I'm not saying for sure, but it might have been Vice President Christopher that asked for this to be put off. We were waiting. We were hoping that we were going to be able to get funding from the, use funding. It was an infrastructure-type project for OPERA. We don't feel that that's appropriate or we don't feel we have the authority to do that. So we did not vote on this for the 80,000 coming out of reserve. I don't think, I don't anticipate any resistance to it, but I think to do it properly, we need to advertise it and we need to have a finance committee meeting. You know, Counselor Christopher took his privilege, which is, which he is totally within his rights to do. But now we just have to put it on the finance committee agenda and come back and vote it at the next council meeting.
All right, but in the motion, it was never to be OPERA funds. It was coming from E.B. Newton.
No, it was supposed to come from E.B. Newton. Right.
Which has the money, but if you want to put it over.
Yes, it does have the money, but we haven't advertised it.
Motion to put it over to the next meeting? Is there a second? Jim's motion to put it over?
I think that was already put over at the last meeting, Council President, Dave Ford.
Well, here is all business today. If we would have to put it over again.
I'd like to move the question back to finance, right?
Right. It wasn't on the finance committee agenda for this, for this evening. So, you know, if it was 10,000, I would say we could just vote it right now, but where it's 80, I think it needs to be advertised. I have, personally, I have no issues with it and I don't see any potential issues, but it's up to the council, but I think it should be advertised and voted on at the next meeting.
All right. I'll, can I, I'll just say that my, my only concern about this was whether or not we had the, the funds, a comfortable enough amount of funds in case something was to happen. That was my really only concern about this. I understand that it's coming out of a revolving fund and it looks like we have a significant amount of funds in there, but I just, I guess, I don't know enough about the building to be able to say that the amount that would be left over after we allocate this would be enough to, you know, repair a boiler if it had broke or if there was something that really needed to be repaired that was an emergency and we had obligations to do it in a very quick manner. That was really more my concern than whether or not OPERA funds would cover it. So I guess, I, I still think we, we need to hear more about that, but if that could be more of what we focus on, yeah.
I, Mr. President, if we could refer it back to finance, I will have Steve Kala reach out to Rich Tifoni on the building and to answer those questions at the finance commission meeting next, before the.
Finance committee. And I think Counselor Christopher.
Council President, if I could, I speak, I could answer just about any question you'd have about the E.B. Newton. Studied it, lived it for the last 25, 30 years. I, I know that this number's a good number that we're presenting to the, to the council. I don't think there's any question. Actually, I did it for Rick Trifuni, got the number for him. Annie Anna, we worked on it. It's a reputable company, American Steepo. They've been around for 100 years. You know, I, I don't know why we keep on playing with this, this issue. It needs to be addressed. I, you know, I, I don't know why we have to study it. We've discussed it, you know, for over two years. I mean, if you want another two weeks before, you know, for the finance committee, you know, fine. It's just two more weeks that it's going to leak and we're not going to get it done. You know, we talk about public safety and hazards, you know. Steve, this week, we had, you know, flashing from this roof, blow-off, copper flashing that could have killed someone. You know, these buildings are old. They need to be attended to. We keep on putting off. You know, we want new tennis courts, we get them. We want new, you know, sheds for the golf course, we get them. But we don't want to maintain our property, heritage, buildings, and I, I think it's time we just move this question and get it done.
I just think to Counselor Christopher's point, wasn't the question, questioning that the bid, are the specs that we got, not the bid?
It was a quote that we.
A quote. He wasn't questioning that. He was questioning what else needs to be done to that building and do we have enough reserve to do it? I think that's, if the boil goes, and I don't think that's the case.
The boiler was done probably about, you know, when we renovated the, the first floor. We put a gas burner in there. Chief Landigan orchestrated that a few years ago. So that's, you know, the heating has always been an issue in that building because it's, it's one zone for a large building and, you know, that's, that's an issue that's going to be ongoing. And, you know, it's one system, it's a gravity, you know, air system and so, you know, that's always an issue with that building. Those windows were done probably 25 years ago and they were never right since the day they put them in. They never went up and down. I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of issues. Yeah, there is. But those are not, you know, issues that, you know, those are big capital issues that, you know, 80,000 is not going to affect.
And right now, we have no, we have nothing coming out of finance because it wasn't addressed.
I will refer it to finance committee. I would have liked to have passed this. I think something needs to be done, but it will go back to finance committee.
President Boncorie, I'll make a motion to pass it and ask for a second to make a vote on this now.
I'll second it.
The motion's been made to pass it. Okay. Take a roll call vote, please. Any discussion on it?
Can I just ask Robbie Powers, who's on, he's on the Zoom? I just have a point of order on the, the motion and whether or not it would be even sustainable if it was passed. And that was because the, the money is being spent is $80,000. It might need to be advertised, but coming out of a revolving fund is different than the general budget. So my question to Robbie is, Robbie spending 80,000 out of revolving, does that, does that need to be advertised?
No, I think we're good to go on this.
Okay.
It was a budget motion that was amended. It's been, you know, it was significantly advertised as, as part of the budget to begin with.
Perfect. Thank you.
It was advertised at 19,000 in the budget.
Jim, I'm sorry.
It was advertised for 19,000 in the budget.
No, there was a lot of things in the budget that wasn't advertised.
Amendment made after the fact. I don't have a problem with getting it fixed. I want to get it fixed right, but I want to do it right to make sure that we're, you know, this is, it's not 8,000, it's 80,000. We want to make sure we're doing it right. I mean, I couldn't agree with Counselor Farino more than it's been way too long. I don't think two more weeks is going to change it and I want to make sure that the bid's still good, that we're good to go, that we have enough money and that we're doing it right and that we're doing it legally. That's all. I mean, hey, I'd be happy to be proven wrong in two weeks.
It was a baseline for a bid. It wasn't a bid. It was a baseline for what we should ask for in the budget. Okay? Because, you know, 20,000 was not gonna, was, was not even a paint job, you know? And that's why we went out and asked an expert on what his true thought of, of the project.
You want to press your motion? Motion's been made by Counselor DiMarco to pass this tonight. There was a second by Counsel Farino, I believe.
I'll give it to two weeks. If Counselor Terry thinks he, he needs more time to really thoroughly think about this, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't want to disrespect his, his request.
No, you don't need my vote. I'm just, I, I just want to make sure it's being done right, honestly. And, and I can't say if it is or not tonight. I would say no, but I don't know for sure and I, I just wouldn't vote on it. Doesn't mean, you know, five others can, can vote on it.
Okay, Richard, you return your second and Counselor DiMarco will draw his.
I'll withdraw my motion. I just want to make sure this doesn't get kicked down the can and, the can doesn't get kicked down the road anymore. It's two weeks and never.
Will you make sure it's on the next agenda, please, and at the next finance meeting?
Point of information. So does a, does an RFP need to go for this or are we all set with this quote? I, I guess I'm just a little confused. How these things typically work.
It's 80,000 construction cost over 50, Steve?
Oh, yeah.
Anything over 50 in construction cost?
From what I'm understanding, Counselor Farino, it's not a quote. It's just a, we don't even have.
It's an estimate.
Yeah, it's an estimate.
So we'd have to go out, whether or not they're sole proprietors or it might be some exceptions, but technically, yes, we'd go out anything over 50.
All right, that, that's put off till next meeting. Discussion on the dog park and bullshit.
Discussion from the finance committee is just that we, we discussed this. The, originally, the Winter Foundation has been incredibly generous to donate 100,000 towards the dog park. The council voted to match, do a matching of 25,000, so I think there was 125,000 put aside for the dog, dog park. The total project with the golf shed came in roughly 125,000 over budget. The total project with the golf shed came in roughly 125,000 over budget.
Yeah, sure.
So, when we put this, this project out of the bid, we bid the entire dog park, you know, all the grading work, the drainage required, the water service coming in, and the construction of the dog park. For the, for the shed, we, we, in the bid documents, was the grading, the drainage work required for that, the water service in, and, and the slab, and the structural pairs, the holder slab. With that alone, so, so, we bought the, the building kit separately, which we, we have secured. We have that on site right now, but we still owe the, the assembly, and we owe the electrical service coming in. When you break down the bid, the actual bid amount, we were $30,000 short on the dog park, $30,000 short on just the groundwork for the building. So, that's 60. You got another 30,000 for the assembly of the, of the kit that we have, which is 90. And then, we're figuring, you know, and actually 30 to 35,000 for the, for the electric, the electric work. And there's a buildout, there's a specific agreement with the golf club that described the shed that they agreed on, that was signed by the previous town manager. There was a minimal buildout inside the building for a rough electrical partition wall for, for a office space, and I think some framing for a, maybe an eventual bathroom if it goes, if it goes in there. So, all that combined is a $125,000 shortfall on the project. What I, what I do want to caution the council is construction costs through the roof right now. We're already into the, into the construction season, so if we put this thing out to rebid, you're going to, you're going to get people, I think the bids are going to continue to go up unless you significantly reduce the scope of your, of your project. And I don't think we can reduce the scope too much on the shed because we have a signed agreement. So, now, you start looking at the dog park. But like you said, we have separate funds for that dog park. I don't think you gain anything unless you're going to, you're going to rethink this whole project. I don't think you gain anything by going out to bid. I think you prolong it, and I think you're going to get a, if not the same price, potentially a higher price. So, just wanted to get those, those comments out there.
So, can you just talk about, you know, we're talking about overbid this, overbid that. Can you talk about the final project cost for these two properties? These two things, basically, the dog park and the shed. How much each would cost in its totality?
So, I think right now, remaining for the, for the actual dog park, I don't know, for the actual shed, I think we have 245,000 left, because, because, you know, we've already secured the, the building kit. For the, for the dog park, we have 125,000 combined. When you break down the bid, like I explained, that we just put out, we come in 30,000, but when you break down the bid tabulation, you know, what makes up the dog park, we're $30,000 short therabouts, and we're about $30,000 short for just that part of the, of the, of the groundwork. You still got to assemble the building, 30,000. So, right now, we're sitting on 245,000 plus 125. Whatever that adds up to, we're 125,000 short of that.
So, roughly, it's a half a million dollar project. It's 155 for the dog park, and it's 370 for.
440 something, or 430 something, yeah. And it didn't include the construction of the building. That was kept out because it was, you know, our engineer and, and Richard Funi saying, well, I think, we think we can do it, you know, if we put that in the bid, we're going to, we, we potentially would gain even more for the assembly of it all, all in. So, he wanted to take that out for a specialized company that, you know, so there's that cost.
And this isn't even a complete normal foundation with solid concrete all the way across, right? This is just a partial, no, not even a slab. It's a partial slab, basically with the.
You got your footing, you can't, and then a partial slab on top of that. It's all structural. You know, the, the soil conditions down there aren't good. We, we ran into it with the football field. We all know what, you know, what we're trying to build on over there. But that's the, that's the price that we got, and I don't think you're going to do better unless you significantly reduce the scope of your, of your project. I think by putting it out to bid, if you're going to keep it as the same project, I think you should expect probably a higher price with the way construction is right now. The cost of materials is, 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 you know. Plywood is almost $100 a sheet right now. It's just, that's just.
That's crazy.
The way it is, you know. And again, you're already into the construction season. We bid this at a time when people were trying to plan for their, for their year. Now, you're going to bid on this saying, okay, well, it's, it's a bonus if I get this job. That's the way I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about it. I wouldn't put a, a project like this out to bid at this time of the year. You put it out when we did, in the early spring, or even the previous winter, as people are trying to give you their best price because they want a lineup worth of the following year. So, unless you're prepared to go into the next calendar year, you know, and try to get your timing right, I don't think by just putting it out to bid at this time, you're going to do any better than the price you have.
Unless you've changed the scope of the work.
Yeah, unless you change the scope.
I thought we had all the money we needed with the Miller Field Committee after, and then, I guess we used more money on the tennis court?
No, we did not use any more money on the tennis court. We had set aside money for the tennis court.
275,000 towards this shed.
For the shed.
Not the dog park, the shed.
Yeah, and we have 245.
Well, because we have to.
We purchased the kit, the shed.
What went to the tennis court says nothing to do with this.
All right, let's.
So, the question would be, where do you get the 125,000? That's the question.
Okay, so, we're going to put this over till next month, next meeting?
There's one more thing.
Well, you have a time restriction.
The contractor only is bound to his price for 60 days, and we've already into, we're past 30, already.
Do you have until the next meeting? Do you know what the date is, the 60 days?
I, I, the bid opening was, yeah, May 26.
Steve, can you get together with Robbie and try to find the money to do this?
There's no press upstairs, I assure you. But certainly, we, we can speak with Robbie and Jim and put our, you know, hats together and see what's the most sensible. I know Robbie's feeling, you know, it shouldn't come from our stabilizations. I can tell you that right off the bat. So, we've been down, we've been exploring this since we knew the deficit, and I just want to, you know, Steve was right on with his estimates when, when he thought that this was going to cost us from the get-go. So, it's, it's, you know, we'll certainly meet, be happy to meet and go over the. We don't have many options to where to take this money from.
It would be good to get a date, to make sure we're on a date, and if we come up with a plan, we could have.
May 26 is the bid opening, so June 26 is the 30 days. So, we're into.
July 26.
Next meeting, we have to make a decision.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on to the flag raising policy. Did you get any?
No, so, as I reported earlier, so, we started the conversation about what that, what that policy might look like. So, but we don't have anything written for this.
Ready for a motion. Okay, so, we'll put that over to the next meeting. We'll put that back on old business. Okay, next motion in front of us is the Town Council transfer funds for the fire department retro pay. I believe it's an amount of 155,000. Jim, do you have that from finance?
Yeah. So, there's a motion that the Town Council vote to transfer $155,000 from salary reserve account to the fire department budget to cover the cost associated with the fiscal '20 and fiscal '21 collective bargaining agreement, or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay, now, that's under new business, but it's already been to your committee?
No, it has not been.
New motion.
It's a new motion.
All right, so, I will refer that to finance, finance committee. Okay, all right, National Grid Plans Number 2674955. That's the big one with the conduits from Revere to Agar Street. Who's proposing that motion? Terry, is that coming from you?
That'd come from me through, you know, National Grid, the right of way, right?
Yeah.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve. Barbara?
Yeah, still moved. Still moved.
Seconded. All right.
What are we approving, actually?
We have to.
They need a right of, right of way.
So, we're giving them an easement for a specific period, just like. I mean, they have the right to do the project.
We can stop it.
They need a right of way approval from the town.
You can stop it by not issuing the permit.
Right.
This is like an easement for private, but utilities get a right of way instead of an easement.
Okay. All right, any discussion on that project?
Hearing none. I'm seconding a question. Is this something that needs to be voted on tonight? Is this time sensitive, or is this something that can go to committee? Because I feel like this is a pretty big project.
I think it's time sensitive.
It's time sensitive because their funding is, is allocated towards each year, so that's why you saw the 2021 allocation. So, it's a much larger project coming in from, from Revere, so it is time sensitive.
Construction in April, they got held up with COVID.
Right.
And you do want to step back.
Yeah.
It's already.
Hanging around since April. They've been working with Terry and Stephen to get this done.
I understand. I just, you know, tonight was the first night we, as a council, really saw the plans, so, you know.
And you can take your prerogative and put it over, but I think we should put it on because I think it's public safety as far as getting electrical and.
No, I, I understand that. I guess my question was if this could go to a committee for further investigation. I, I don't know if we have two weeks. I understand that we might not, but.
To be honest with you, they wanted to be on the last meeting, and we had to push it because of the budget.
Yeah.
So.
We know Revere has already approved?
They have approved.
They are approved. Okay.
President Boncoria, is there any reason why we can't vote on all three at once, based on the presentation?
I suppose we can, but the other two are specific to, one is specific to building up that project on Somerset Avenue. The other one is in Washington. I mean, if you want to take all three at once, make that motion to approve them.
Any objections, guys?
It sounds like one is more time sensitive.
Okay. All right, then, let's take them all at once. Let's take them separately, then.
All right. On the first one, National Grid Plan 26074955. All those in favor signify by saying hi when your name is called.
Did somebody second it?
Yes, it was seconded.
No.
I, I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Counselor Jarrow?
Yes.
Counsel Flacott?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Counsel Honig?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte. Counsel Freino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncoria?
Yes. The next one is National Grid Plan 30386215. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is, is there similar time constraints with this project, or is this something that we could send to committee?
On this one, I believe we could go to committee, Steve. This is CBD. We run into conflicts there.
The only problem is us trying to get our, our sidewalk and curbing done, so we wanted to, and that's supposed to start July 19th. So, we're trying to get, if, if the council's even going to approve it, that vault needs to go into the ground ASAP, so it doesn't set back our.
I think that's what you said in public hearing, that you have to get that in before your project goes in, and that's going to be happening July 19th, so it really isn't time. Okay? So, motions been made to approve. And seconded. All those in favor signify by saying hi when your name is called.
Counsel Jarrow?
Yes.
Counsel Flacott?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Terry?
Yes.
Counsel Honig?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte. Counsel Freino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncoria?
Yes. And the next one is National Grid Plan Number 30399374, and that is, I believe, Cottage Park Road issue.
This is the one on Pleasant Street.
Yeah, it's Somerset and Woods. Okay, that's the Woodside.
That's, that's the electrical cabinet for our decorative lighting down there and the conduit feed to it.
Okay, so, that's.
Also kind of sensitive so we can get our road work done.
So, you can get the road work done for CBD, to the Center Business District.
It's a crossing from Samuel's side over to the Swet's Lica side, and then a new cabinet.
Okay. Motion to approve for second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying hi when your name is called.
Counsel Jarrow?
Yes.
Counsel Flacott?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Terry?
Yes.
Counsel Honig?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte. Counsel Freino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncoria?
Yes. Okay, the next thing I have is appointments, and the appointments I'm making tonight. Michael Abboud and Christopher Sullivan as constables for the Town of Winterup. These are reappointments.
Okay, those two names have been put into nomination. Is there any discussion on the nominations for constable? Motion to approve. Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Jarrow?
Yes.
Counsel Flacott?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Terry?
Yes.
Counsel Honig?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte. Counsel Freino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncoria?
Yes. I have another appointment, and that is a new appointment to a policymaking committee of the licensing board, and I am appointing Kurt Millar to replace Richard Ackerman, who resigned.
Okay, Mr. Millar's name has been put into nomination. Is there any discussion on it? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counsel Jarrow?
Yes.
Counsel Flacott?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Terry?
Yes.
Counsel Honig?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte. Counsel Freino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncoria?
Yes. And the, the next appointment is, I am appointing the following people to the middle school RFP committee, and that is interim town manager Terry Delahanty, the town planner Rachel Kelly, the economic development committee, which is Counselor Peter Christopher, Counselor Stephen Jero, and Counsel Barbara Flacott, planning board member Alyssa Gamble, and planning board member Chris Boyce. At this time, that's the committee I'm appointing. Terry, if you feel that you need more people at some point, let me know, and I'll get you other people appointed, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now, I think we have two. Public comment. Is there any public comment in the building? Karen?
Karen Travis, please see through. I'm glad the chief is here tonight. I want to know if there's any ticketing going on overnight.
Yes.
Because on any given night on my street, between 49 and 69 Lincoln Street, there are at least two cars, if not four, with no stickers. And this has been going on for a long time. It isn't just recently. And for Mr. Kala, the new trash barrels. They're being used in my neighborhood, and I think my neighbors are using them respectively. The trash and recycled barrels being placed on the sidewalk near the curb for pickup. Once emptied by the hauler, they either pushed hard or tossed back to the curb, landing from the actual curb to one to two feet from the curb, never back on the sidewalk. These barrels will not last long with that treatment. And it's also inconvenient for residents who are out and come back and try to get into their driveway and can't because there are barrels. My house, it's a double driveway. The people next door to us, we, they have their driveway, and we have our driveway. They put out at least two, two recycles and four barrels every week, and we have one in one. And those barrels, I mean, if you come back tomorrow, you'll see them, they're plunked, right in front of the driveway, and you have to get out and move them. I don't think, and I thought it was supposed to be easier for the hauler using these barrels. This is my big issue, and I, I hope it's all on your minds as much as it's on my mind, and everybody else is on the finance commission. You voted a balance budget for FY '22 using stabilization, stabilization money and ARPA money totaling $530,000. That is not available at FY '23. You voted a full salary for the town planner, using $23,000 from the conservation agent line item and $27,000 from the council reserve. There is now no line item to hire a conservation agent. Should the current town planner leave, a new hire can't or won't do the job, so next year, you take $50,000 from the council reserve to cover that. The interim town manager is currently in negotiations with five unions and has a CBA line item, line item of $450,000. This money will be in the budget, the FY '23, but the $200,000 needed to come these raises, I'm sorry, FY. these raises, I'm sorry, FY twenty-two, but the two-hundred thousand needed to cover these raises, the FY twenty-three won't be. The schools accepted a fifty thousand dollar cut for FY twenty-two, but in FY twenty-three, the schools could possibly need to maintain services, two million dollars or more. And these are just figures I'm giving you, for you to think about, that's all I want you to do. We have an interim town manager, an interim CFO, and as of this week, no treasurer collector. I know it's the summer, and everybody wants to enjoy, but I truly feel that all these issues should be vetted by you, the Town Council, and a plan made for the town to move ahead for FY twenty-two, twenty-three. They cannot wait till September to start, then go back to subcommittees, and then the subcommittees drag on, and now all of a sudden, it's January one, which happened to us last year with that horrendous trash fee that we got stuck with. Nobody knew about it till January. January, we were told it was three-hundred thousand dollars, and by the fifteenth of March, it was almost six-hundred thousand dollars in deficit. We cannot go through this again next year. Lastly, a new home for our public safety people. Either a new fire station and complete renovation of the police station, or a new public safety building, choose a site. Get the bonding, buy a red exclusion for the ballot in November. Enough pissing around, this is a deserving, worthy project, which I know people have been looking at, and you can look at it till the cows come home. When I first went on the advisory committee in nineteen ninety-two, Frank Palmer used to stand up at every single town meeting and give a report on the standing of a new fire station. That was nineteen ninety-two. A couple of weeks ago, I read in the transcript, going back as far as nineteen sixty-five, a new fire station was being contemplated, and I think by then, it was fire engineers, I don't believe it was, another town group was the fire engineers. So look how long we've been looking, and we're still looking.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anyone on the public comment?
Yes, there is.
I have a Zoom user, I see.
Yes.
I think that's Kathy Capuccio.
Hi, Kathleen Gutierrez, forty-nine Wolf Park Avenue, Winter. I just want to address two items quickly. One is with regard to the condition of Yarrow, excuse me, Yarrow Beach. And I know there's been, you know, some discussions at meetings, and I'm not trying to be correct, but the woman that, the woman that I believe is hired, is employed by the DPDW that deals with the birds, and, you know, their respective area, the clover they have. You know, I was actually at the beach today with my husband and some nieces, and the beach is truly a mess. You know, we talk so often about, you know, getting people to our town, and, you know, the assets that we have, and, you know, this amazing, beautiful asset that we have is, you know, Yarrow Beach, for example. So I, I'm just requesting, and I'm hoping someone will at some point, get a legal, asking for a legal opinion by Kaufman or whomever else you'd like to use, to actually find out if the woman, again, who's employed by the town, that is making decisions, it seems rather arbitrarily with regard to Yarrow Beach and areas for the clovers. I understand, of course, the town does not want to do anything to violate her law, of course, but based on the meetings I've listened to and conversations I've had with council members, it's really not clear what exactly her jurisdiction is and what the laws are. So I think it would be great if someone on the council would try to get a motion to ask for a legal opinion by Kaufman and Page to get out of each, and, you know, and, and just in better repair, all of the seaweed and all of the bugs, you know, I could just go, you know, what there can be, you know, infection issues or potential disease issues. I just think it's really not clear what the role is and what the laws are. So that's one issue. And then my other one is with regard to the determination of whether to raise flags on town property. I do not believe, I know it was not voted on this evening, but was mentioned by a council member, I do not believe that whether to, whether to raise a flag or not should be dictated by volunteer committees within the town. The town needs to have a specific and clear policy regarding what flags can be raised on town property. This is too, frankly, a divisive issue, a political issue in certain regards, and I really think the town needs to have a very clear policy. Sadly, the town over, over the past couple of years even more, we've had to pay out so much money in lawsuits, again, not regarding flags, but regarding other issues, and I invoke myself as a taxpayer, I don't wanna have to put any more money towards a potential lawsuit if someone says that one flag was planted, another flag wasn't planted. There needs to be a very, very clear policy in this regard. Winter does not have the money to out to more lawsuits, and I absolutely feel that having an indecisive or a policy that's frankly not voted on by our Town Council is an absolute open-winder hope for someone. So, yeah, I know it was not voted on this evening, but when it is, I would really hope that we absolutely, or the council absolutely does not need that determination up to volunteer committees. I do not think it's frankly fair to them, and I think it should absolutely be a clear policy by the Town Council.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Have a wonderful evening, thank you.
Thank you. Grab your hand up again. Go ahead, check. You're recognized.
At the time of third time. Mr. Chairman, concerning comments made here tonight concerning the tennis courts at the high school, the tennis group produced, by title research, the documents saying that that land is town-owned land to be used as parkland and recreation. So I don't think the town should give up the right to the school to be running that tennis court, belongs to the townspeople. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in public comment? Hearing none, we will end public comment. I have openings for appointments to the Airport Hazards Commission, the Conservation Commission, which is a policymaking body, and to the Cultural Council. So if you're interested in any of those committees, please let me know, and we'll be happy to put you on one. Thank you. All right, entertainer motion to adjourn. Motion.
Second.
Motion's been made, it's second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.